...of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Do we have approval of the minutes from the March 12th meeting? Anybody have any?
Got a couple titles. Page four, sixteenth line down. It had to do with the airport. And it, the word should be accessible ACC instead of ASS. We're not taxing it. Got to get airplanes in and out. And the other one was down at the bottom. Going to get to the consent calendar. The very first time where it mentions breakthrough beverage, it came out breakthrough. And the rest of them were breakthrough. First with page four, the sixteenth line. Those two I found, there's no others I'm doing.
Second man.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Approval of the agenda as it is written, do we have any, we have an addition? An addition?
This is just more information.
Information, right?
Yeah, this is already on the, it doesn't need to be added. Just more information, yeah.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most. Do we have any identif- any conflict of interest today? None? Any public comment for something that's not on the agenda tonight? Um, the public hearing will wait. Sandy, do you want to do the report?
Me?
Yeah.
Not really.
We'll let you anyhow.
Uh, first of all, I was approached by a committee member of the women's expo asking if we would be able to serve wine and mimosas at the expo from ten until two. Which Shane and Diane were looking into. And here's the check on the insurance, see if we're covered.
They have all the information they need for the insurance. She didn't get back to me in the morning, so. Know what they find out. That's where that's at. I think that's the last step of the puzzle here, so.
Okay. Also, I have brow beer in the store now and we'll be doing samplings of this beer sometime in April. He was going to let me know, he's been kind of busy. So, um, other than that, do you have any questions?
So, the expo is when, April what?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So, do we have to, um, if she can do the mimosas and stuff, do we have to do anything like?
We approved the conditional.
Last time, right?
Yeah.
But we still have to get a state license, which they require thirty days. But they have.
Information also?
They have bypassed that and got it done for us during that in the past, so I'm hoping. Shouldn't be a problem.
So, then we just wait and see.
Yeah, we can't apply for that until we know our insurance is in place, so.
Um, now I saw sales are up a bit.
Yeah, uh, like when I print out my daily, I showed it today before, the daily printout from the day before. Usually the gross profit is like Saturday, I think it was twenty-five point one. I think on Friday it was twenty-seven, twenty-seven percent. Was gross profit. That's usually what it is, right around twenty-five or twenty-six.
You know, one thing else I didn't realize that, I didn't realize that the cigarettes they have over there are just like on a shelf, they're not like in the cigarette machine. So, are they, are, do they get like inventoried every shift, or, I mean, how do they do that as far as?
I ch- I, I count them.
Oh, so like the, so you have like theft control over that?
Right, right now, we don't hardly have any. Maybe only have ten packs. I'm still trying to buy some.
Okay, I just wondered that, because I, I don't, I thought they were still in the machine.
No.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Sandy?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Shane, you're around the other. Except for Jeff.
Except for me.
Jeff, you want to go first?
Sure. I promised last time that I would be brief, and now I'm losing my voice, so I'm really going to be brief. So, if anybody would like to see, you're welcome to stop into the office back there. I've got piles for every little thing that's going on within the city of Tracy when it deals with the EDA. Um, tonight is when you're going to be, uh, talking about the, uh, the Third Street Apartments that are going, Third Street East Apartments that are going to be for sale. Um, some very good news there, it's going to, uh, once, uh, Luann, who's with us here tonight, once the commissions are paid and once the payoff is going to be taken care of, which I believe the payoff is right around seventy-two thousand dollars. And with the money that's coming in, we should net close to that two hundred thousand dollars. And we have in the economic reserve right now, I believe it's sitting at a hundred and five thousand, so there will be, uh, pretty close to that three hundred thousand dollar mark sitting in the EDA reserve. So, that's good news when it comes down to what we can do in the, uh, especially with the housing. And if we need to make some decisions on housing and, and be able to get into some programs, and it takes money to get into those programs, those should be available. Plus, uh, just, just, we're working on a lot on with Jeff Gladys from the, uh, United Community Action, um, right now. And then he's, uh, looking at, uh, helping me do another housing study here in town and put some things together and. So, that's the main thing we're working on. But also with a few things downtown, Lights and Beyond, we are just waiting for them to get some inventory in and they will be opened up. Sarah Willhite's got her pet grooming business up here uptown going crazy with the amount of business that she's getting from, from all over the area. Uh, got a couple more buildings that don't really, nothing really to talk about right now, but I believe in the next couple of months, we'll have some idea of what a couple more buildings are going to be, uh, possibly used up here in, uptown here, so. But anybody's more than welcome to, anytime, give me a call and I can go over every one of the piles that I have on my desk. It, it shows somebody who's not organized, but no, it's, if I put it away, it's out of sight, out of mind. So, you'd be more than welcome to come back and we can sit down and talk about all of them. So, anybody got any questions for me? Fire away.
Keep up the good work.
I got thick skin.
Keep digging.
Keep digging. Squeaky wheel gets the grease. Okay, that's all I got.
Thanks.
See, that was quick.
I'm it.
You're it.
Most of what I've been doing, I got it in the report here. Uh, it's just a few additions. We're going to have a pool committee meeting tomorrow, then we'll get some, uh, once we get some details figured out there on, uh, you know, the closing is in there, some switching around of swimming lessons, because of how the holiday lands. Um, they're talking about possibly doing swimming lessons for the evening class, the fourth session. Um, instead of Wednesday nights, everything they're doing at Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, twice a week to retain some memory with the attendees. Kind of lose what they learned the week before having it once a week. And then the Fourth of July lands on a Wednesday too, so that kind of throws, throws that schedule off. We're doing some interviews Friday morning, um, for some of the front desk and, uh, assistant managers for the pool. And then just want to thank everybody for their cooperation with the snow. Um, and remind people to use off-street parking when they see snow flying in the air. It's going to help them and it's going to help us, so. Especially when it gets that heavy. That's all I have.
Any questions for Shane?
Pass on my thanks to guys again, this Sunday morning, you're bringing it to church nicer I wrote to you.
Thank you Shane. We have five minutes yet, so we'll go on to the transferring airport entitlement funds.
So, this, uh, this has brought up the airport board also, um, and they recommend we move forward with it. It's for your, we are not able, based on, because we're still working on our master plan this year, we're not able to use the fund. We don't use them, we lose them. Um, so we're looking at transferring a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our entitlement funds to Hutchinson Airport. And then they would, again, in turn, next year, transfer it back to us for our projects. We're going to need more funding for next year's projects to fit in with the master plan, so. It's kind of a, we borrowed it from them and they give it back next year, so.
Have we done that before with different airports?
Yep.
On more than one occasion, it's getting to be time we can start asking for some of that back, so we can get this master plan done, so. Perfect.
So, that and the resolution, we go with it?
I'd make the res- motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen sixty, the transfers airport entitlement funds.
I'd second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Most. Motion carries. Um, you want to talk about the closed meeting for the city administrator interviews?
Yeah, if you don't have too much to ask on it, um, I haven't heard anything back from Wendell. He said he was going to get back to me by the nineteenth. He did not, uh, respond with any of the applicants or.
I meant to call him today.
What's that?
Said I meant to call him today too and ask him that.
Other than that, um, I did check with Matt and the league. We can't do the closed meeting for the administrator interviews. Um, so that, it's a violation of the open meeting law. Uh, the only time it can be closed is if it's, um, like an employee review. It's like me, for instance, or the administrator, if you guys wanted to do a, a review on me, then you can have a closed meeting for that. Beans are not an employee yet, that would not, wouldn't fall under that. Um, we can have, as long as it's less than a quorum, we can have a couple council members. And it could be myself or whoever and a couple council members or however you guys decide you want to do it. You know, have a committee and then narrow it down that way.
Would it be possible Shane, I'm just thinking of this, say two council members interview the two and then the next day, you have two council members interview the two. Is that?
I suppose that'd be depending on where they're from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a logistics item, but it's, it's always a question, but.
I guess I don't see why you wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay, so that's an option. The other thing is, and I know we did it, like when we hired Roger, we did the public interviews. And then we closed, closed the council meeting off for a minute, went into closed session in the admin office and made the decision on who they're going to hire. So, that is permissible, we've already done that once. I mean.
It's been done.
That was during a council meeting.
It, it was during a public meeting, yeah. We just closed that session, as long as you announced that you're going to close that session, so the council can deliberate private, then they'll come back and give the answer. That shouldn't be an issue with it.
I will look, we got time, I guess, to research that, but. So, you, to close it to make a decision on which candidate, is that?
Nothing personal, Shane, but, but to interview someone that's going to wind up ultimately being your superior? I don't know, having you involved in the interview process would be the best thing, so they just.
No, it's completely up to you guys on what you wanted to do, so.
Not that you're opinion, and again, an opinion would be valid after the fact, because we had Audrey in when we were talking about Rogers. So, that input would be valid then, but.
Yep.
So, not to exclude you from the process, but it just make it, I think it'd be a little awkward for a subordinate to be interviewing his supervisor.
Yeah. Yeah, so however you.
But we haven't heard anything from, where is that, and how many applicants left, right?
Well, you know what, he called me a week ago, maybe two weeks ago. Um, and said that he had these applicants and he thought he had enough, so he wondered if we should keep advertising. And I'm like, well, if you think we have enough, and it's only going to put us back a week if we don't, if we stop the advertisement, you know, and if we decide that we don't like who you're bringing to us, then we can always advertise it again.
Right.
So, I told him to stop the advertising. But then he's never came with us with these applicants. And I have two comments about that. First of all, is I think that Jeff, as long as he's willing, should be on the committee for the hiring of the administrator. And my second thought is, and I talked to somebody else about this and they had the same thought, but I think that it makes good sense for us to see these applicants, the ones that he's even rejected, just to look at them and see who they are. There's not who they are, but what they have for qualifications. I don't think it would hurt to just take a look at them. And I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but.
Yeah, like you said, it can't hurt anything. I mean, it might be one of those, they're just out of college, they've been around for twenty years, but then we see that too. But then is that, if they're, well, they applied for this job, so yeah, it's like, it's open to us, should be open to us.
And there's, there are, they should be our applications.
Right. Right, so are you going to contact Wendell?
I can.
I, I, I'm a little mixed emotion on that particular one. We've got, we've got them involved to take out any bias, they have a special eye on them. I think going back over them after he sorted them, I'm just going to throw a number out there, he's got ten applicants he sorted through, he's going to give us three to interview. Why would we want to go second guess the guy we got that we hired to do something?
Just to see what's there.
Just to see what's there, I don't know what, what.
I don't know, I mean, because first of all, I'm thinking, so he's looking at it from this standpoint, and we may be looking at it from another standpoint, so who's?
We gave him all the information that, but we need to go to the public hearing, we can go back to that.
Okay, we'll go back to that. Um, is there anybody here from the public for the abate, tax abatement hearing that we're having at six forty-five?
Luann is, is here just to answer any questions if you needed to be, that's why I asked her to be here tonight, but I can address anything that you need, or I'll try.
Do they officially open the public hearing?
Pardon me?
Do they officially open the public hearing?
Didn't I do that?
Well, kind of, but not.
We're officially opening the public hearing for the tax abatement. Does anybody like to speak about that?
Just so everybody's clear on it, it's, it's for the sale of the Third Street East property and the abatement that goes along with it is the purpose of the public hearing. So, we've got, we've got it covered both ways.
We don't have any comments, should we?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing for the tax abatement. And we'll let them move forward with that.
And then that goes hand in hand with the resolution, right?
Yep.
Got it.
So, does anybody like to?
I would make a motion to approve the resolution twenty eighteen seventeen, grant the abatement for the Third Street East property, the state owned property.
No second?
First and second, any discussion? Carry none, now in favor?
Aye.
Most, motion carries.
Then we're back to the seventy percent that didn't get.
So, what you're wanting to look at is for the curiosity of looking at it, or?
I don't know.
Because like I said, we, because like Tony said, we set out the criteria we were after. And if he's got.
Well, I understand that, but then we changed it passively through there.
Changed the timeline, not the criteria.
I thought we lowered it, the, not having to have the education and the experience.
Well, that was in there from the get-go.
We never officially changed anything. We talked about it, we never changed it.
Never changed anything.
Officially.
No, that's just my feelings on that.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to undermine him, but I just feel like sometimes, like, he could be looking for one thing and, I don't know. That's my feeling on it.
Did he set out with a questionnaire to the members of the council?
Yep.
Of expectations, and then, didn't he get with the department heads yet or not?
No.
Okay. That was another one of those, we could probably look at that thing and didn't, didn't get done, but. They gave us a pretty clear, clear criteria as to what we're looking for, what the priorities were and what, what we wanted, and I mean. It just. Seems to me like we're just backpedaling by going through that, I mean. If, if a person wanted to look at them, just to look at them, you know, that, then you, but I wouldn't do it to change your, uh, recommendation. I don't see any sense to do that.
Are you talking about, like, if we don't like the re recommendation that he put forward to us and then you, you would like to look at the?
Yeah, actually, for both reasons.
And you may wind up with them, as, as another scenario, and this happened on the time around, it was time to get a hold of Mike. By the time we finally got done second guessing ourselves and setting up who we were going to interview, the ones that we wanted to interview, only two of them are available, the other ones took jobs. And the way this is going, that's another, another log on the fire that could be thrown in here. If he's got them, he's going to send us people that will, that will come to interview, he's not going to just, here's all of them, go, these, well, I recommend pick through these, then now you're wasting time looking at some that may or may not show up.
But are we not wasting time waiting for him on the other hand?
Well, we are. Well, he agreed to the timeline back in December to make him go out as far as we did. I mean, it, uh, the advertising, the last I looked at the ad, it wasn't still filled, so, I don't know. We're not spending anything on advertising, we're, it was all in professional journals for it. Because he hasn't sent us any bills on advertising, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, honestly, it was close to five hundred dollars.
Okay, well, then that'd be a reason to stop, and then, then I'd say contact and get us, get us some names.
I mean, because he counted both of us before and told us that he was going to have them by.
And he may be running into the situation, like I said, he's got his list down to three, based on what he reviewed, and he tried contacting them to take another job. That's entirely a possibility, and then we're back to, this is, we're not the only ones looking for an administrator at this time. It's a very, it's a, a buyer's market out there right now, I mean, they get to buy, they're going to interview a job that's going to pay them the most, most for where they want to be. That's because there's so many vacancies. So, it's.
I understand that, but I just, I just think it's like, first of all, I think it's, you know, a simple email could have said, you know, blah, 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 but.
Well, I agree, communications are.
Yeah, communication is like terrible.
I don't know if he's communicating with, with Shane anymore than, as a member of the council, I feel like I've been out of the loop since we put it in his lap. So, it, uh.
Yeah, other than the emails that I gave you at the last meeting, I haven't heard. And all, you had a short conversation with him and that's about it. So, most of these talk to someone else individually, but.
Rattle his cage tomorrow if you can.
Do that.
See exactly where we're at.
Okay, should move on to the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage.
I'd make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Most. Motion carries, now we'll do it with breakthrough beverage.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar for breakthrough, including breakthrough beverage.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Municipal accounts receivable.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Unfinished business, the wall of fame.
Included in the packet, some of the things other cities have established for the wall of fame, that was brought up in the council communications at the last meeting.
If you could give me a print copy of those, I will give it to the parties that suggested this and we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
So, we'll leave it unfinished for now?
Yeah.
Um, spring citywide cleanup prices?
I know this brought up, um, I think at the last meeting, um, the mattress and box spring, if it's one set or if it was individual, it is an individual price. I don't know if I brought this up last time, but if, if it comes in wet or dirty, it's twenty-five dollars. Otherwise, it's seven dollars for us to dispose of it if it's dry, and it's per item, so fourteen dollars for mattress and the box spring. And if it's king, it's twenty-one dollars, because there's two box springs, so they count them all as individual piece items, so. Um, I know that was a question. I don't know if you guys had any other?
No, the rest look good.
I understand.
We have to throw away this.
Yeah, that's what they said, put it the last time. Okay, we did the minister update, do you want anything, we don't have anything else about that to somebody else?
We maybe have a motion for those prices for the update.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve the prices for the spring cleanup, as printed.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Most. Motion carries. Um, we have the lifeguard update, we don't have to do that anymore.
I'll see what the pool committee says.
I'm sorry?
We'll see what the pool committee says, um, we're meeting with them tomorrow right after, at five o'clock, so.
Mayor Council Communication. Anybody have anything for that?
I do not.
One question, where are we at on the, uh, property behind the rooster that was for the annexation, have we got that done?
No.
So, we have to re-notify all the property, surrounding property owners thirty days prior. So, we won't be holding the public hearing until May seventh. It'll be advertised in the paper the two weeks prior to that. And then, once the public hearing is approved, then we can go ahead and have it recorded again and the new ordinance. and the new ordinance published to make it valid.
So do you need a motion for a public hearing for the seventh of May now, so we don't run it up against anymore?
I'm meeting one week over the fourteenth, isn't it?
Fourteenth.
Yeah, the meeting is until the fourteenth, but Matt said the soonest we could do it was the seventh, so.
All right, then we have time for this, so it didn't get-
Lost in the shuffle?
There's no re, we, if that's what it's going to be, we can just make a motion tonight to do it on the fourteenth of May, that correct?
You want to do it at six forty-five?
Yeah, I'd, okay, if it's, if that's going to work, we'll go ahead and, I'd make a motion for a public hearing for the annexation of the property to the north of the Red Rooster for six forty-five to the fourteenth of May.
You get to do that one, so I won't be here, but.
I'll second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries. Um, I just have one thing for, um, Mayor Council Communication, is I received a letter from a citizen, and I just want them to know that I'm checking into that, so, actually two. And if anybody doesn't have anything else, the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn it. Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries.